All right, good afternoon, everyone. We, uh, work session today is for the Salisbury City Council. Today is Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. Just there was a slight change on the agenda. Typically, we don't do public comments during the work session. And today, we do not have any intention of doing that today. This is just a discussion on the labor code. So we'll go ahead and get started. See how we proceed, because this was tabled. So we are now bringing it back for discussion again. The administration has sent forth the same original code. And I'll start with Ashley, if you have anything, if you want to discuss anything.
Yeah, I think you're correct procedurally. What you have before you is what we were discussing back maybe March, April timeframe before it was tabled. I understand that there was some input and then also some input today. So I feel like at this point, we should defer to the representatives here. And then you can hear from them and we can proceed accordingly. Because right now, the draft is the same. So if there's going to be changes, I think you guys need to hear potentially what they will be. And we can move forward from there.
Were you able to review?
I have, yes.
Okay, all right. And I think we had Sabilla from Ashmead. Shiona.
Yeah, hi. I think that your audio is just like a little bit spotty. So I don't know if there's a specific question, but do you want me to just chat a little bit about some of the amendments that we sent over to council members?
Yes, can you, can you hear me? I don't, where's the audio?
Yeah, it's right here. It's right.
It's right here.
Oh, okay, all right.
Is that public comment? I mean, I'm confused.
Part of the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So she, she's gonna, she's gonna discuss what she sent to us earlier today. Some suggested changes to the code that the city has. So I'll, Sabilla, you have the floor.
I don't know if it's you or me, but it is a little bit spotty. I'm gonna kick it to David, because he's in the room. Maybe that would be easier.
You just have a good one. That was a good one.
Well, that's fine. If you want to sit at the end of the table.
Sit in the hot seat.
Okay.
She set you up, didn't she?
That's fine. Hi, it's nice to meet everybody in the room. Many, many familiar faces, clients, old friends, new friends, everybody else. I've met some of the council folks. For those of you who don't know me, I'm David Wright. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Conspith and Collins in Baltimore, Maryland. I've been there for 13 years. And we represent IFF locals throughout the state. I have the pleasure of representing Baltimore City's ranking file firefighters, Baltimore County, Antirundel, and just down the street here in Ocean City as well. We also have the pleasure of representing Ashmead, Maryland, and formerly Ashmead Council 67. We've done a lot of work with them, both in the state of Maryland and for all municipalities they represent, be it Baltimore City and Cova Park and Bakers Town and all over the state of Maryland, in small towns, in big counties, in school boards, wherever else. So public sector labor law is kind of my thing. It's what I spend probably 80% of my time doing and proud to do so. And proud to be down here helping get this moved ahead. This came to my attention more than a year ago when the IFF was in communications with the mayor about having collective bargaining with interest arbitration, which is the good, modern system of having employees engaged and having them have the capacity to kind of speak up in the workplace, address their wages, address their working conditions, address all the things that matter to them. It's become quite common in Maryland. I mean, Maryland honestly was, you know, behind for many years, kind of a bit of a southern state. But we've moved and moved and moved over the years towards having more collective bargaining. At this point, it's really quite stable. And there's a good pattern set about how it works and how it functions and how it keeps everybody in this room sort of moving forward. And gives you all a way to hear from employees and a way to problem solve. So charter amendment, of course, got passed. Kudos to the team that did that, some of whom have moved on to other things. That was great. That set up the fact that we now need a labor code that has all the details. And your council, COU, S, COU in SEL, worked on a labor code to have all the details about how do you know that firefighters represent a majority of employees? How do you know that Ashmead represents a majority of employees? There needs to be a process for that. And then when you actually bargain, how do you bargain? What's the timeline? What's the, what are the subjects of bargaining? And what do you do if there's conflict? So that's kind of the whole universe of things. We had offered to kind of model things on some different jurisdictions. And you all have adopted many of the kind of standard forms. But there are some deviations that concern the labor participants in this room. I shouldn't leave out the FOP, who I don't speak for, but are in here certainly and who we've coordinated with. So the goal today is try to get the labor code in a place where everybody can be satisfied and get this thing done. Because it's time to move from the lawmaking stage to the bargaining stage. So the amendments today are focused on a number of things that kind of pull this into the mainstream in ways that we feel like need to happen, having had lots of roundtables with the different stakeholders and looking at different labor codes throughout Maryland. Does everybody have a copy of the amendments? I don't know if they, I assume they were circulated internally. So, you know, some of these, if Sabilla was talking, they're cleanups from her. Some of them are kind of the top tier things that have been most discussed. And let me just kind of walk through a few of them. On page one, there's an effort to kind of drill down on what it means to be a management employee. Because there's a pretty set definition in the labor relations world about what it means to be a manager employee, what kind of powers you have to have. And the language that is added there, this includes having the authority to exercise independent judgment in the interest of the employer, to hire, transfer, suspend, layoff, recall, promote, discharge, or discipline other employees, or having the responsibility to adjust the grievance or effectively to recommend such an action if it is not routine or clerical nature, but requires the use of independent judgment. That's kind of a stock, what it means to be a manager. You're a problem solver, you have power to say, this could go this way or that way, it's going to go that way. That bit of clarity is needed. The second amendment, lines 96 to 98, this is kind of very important. And it's been talked about a few times about where you draw the line in public safety in particular, between management employees and non-management employees. So those are rank structured places. The general employees, you know, you know a manager, when you see a manager, because they have those powers that we just described. But in the police department and the fire department, you know based on rank, who has the power. So in, we've reworded this to have captains be in the unit in the fire department, because they don't make those good decisions. They are coordinating those below them in rank, but they're, they're not managers as that term is known. Same with lieutenants in the police department. So that brings those individuals, and that's, that's traditional in Baltimore City. Actually, Baltimore County, they certainly go through captain in their rank for who's in the unit. In Baltimore City, they actually have a unit that's expressly for fire officers. And Antirundel, it goes through captains as well. So it's really the standard. I think if you look at Prince George's and anywhere else, it's always through those first two couple levels of officers. And then it pauses before you get to be deputy or assistant chief level. I'll say the same is true of police, although I know police a little less. 196 and 198, the edit there is to make very clear that this is a workplace where to have your career with Salisbury ended or to have a week of pay taken from you as a disciplinary measure takes just cost. It means there needs to be a reason. Quite standard, typical in all collective bargaining agreements and most labor codes that. City of Salisbury is rational. If you've done wrong, they're going to show that you've done wrong and there's going to be consequences to it. But otherwise, there's not arbitrary decisions. The third edit is the one that has caused a lot of discussion. It's been kind of a sticky point at times. But this, this gets it done. There are 232 to 240. So collective bargaining has been around since, well, in the federal private sector for about 90 years at this point. What it always means, what's, what's in my blood and in my mind and what I can't ever shake is that collective bargaining covers wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. So that means what do people care about when they are working for the city of Salisbury or Baltimore County or wherever they might be working? They care about that they can make a living. They care about the fact that they can arrange their family and their lives around set hours that makes sense. And then honestly, there's scores of other topics that are more than one can even speak to. It might be vacations, it might be safety issues, it might be pension issues, it might be the, the uniform you wear, it might be the grievance process itself, how things are resolved. It's who's in the unit and who's not. It's more things than you could ever list. I've tried to list them. It's a unpleasant task to try to cover it all. And so within the private sector and in the public sector, that's a term of art, other terms and conditions of employment. Management certainly has its rights. So this does not cover everything, right? The city of Salisbury has to set a budget. That's the city of Salisbury business. The city of Salisbury has to make sure that people's lives are saved. That's the city of Salisbury business. But there are other terms and conditions of employment that again are more than I can, I can list, but wind up being 30, 40, 50, 60 page contract signed up fire department that are just all the things. They're just, you know, drug testing, health insurance, although we've excluded health insurance. Why? Because that is something that the employees here understand is it's a benefit, it's a stable benefit. It doesn't need to be negotiated. It's not typically negotiated these days because of the complexities. So that's been carved out in the language. Otherwise, that gets the sphere of topics covered. The next page, we kind of move to more cleanup-y kinds of things. The top of page two, which is E, mine's 242, 252, kind of matches what I just explained about sort of the scope. You know, you ought to, one of the things to keep in mind is the scope of bargaining varies with each employee group. Firefighters care about things different from highway workers and public works workers. And they care about different things than police. A lot of these things that come in, what the city's been doing is going to be fine. What matters in any given workplace depends on the management. Depends on where there have been sticky points, where there have been problems, whatever the case might be. So anything that arises at the table that's an appropriate topic, you ought to talk about. That's, this is, everything here is about facilitating conversation and resolution. Still on page two, this talked about having a collective bargaining agreement. The, the standard for a collective bargaining agreement is always to have it be at least one year, two years, and maybe three years is more standard. This goes one or two years. Two years is stability. Three years is even better, but two years gives you stability. So you negotiate a contract and then you stand down for a couple of years. Gives you labor peace, gives you continuity. Retroactivity is struck in there. There's a prohibition on retroactivity. Retroactivity just happens. You know, things take the time that they take. And then if you run past when, when a wage needs to be increased or whatever the case might be, you pay retro, it just happens. It's not, it's, it's not a bugaboo. To try to have, honestly, it's, it's a priority of mine these days to always have things be prospective because it's, it's easier in this, in this world. Lines 267, 269, this is about the recognition process. We don't need particular timelines about when that happens. I think we're on track that maybe this labor code gets done. We have recognition before September 1st. But I don't know how this process is going to play out. But if the, the IFF or Ashmead is working on collecting cards that demonstrate that employees support the union, those should be acceptable whenever. There's no particular timeline there. And, and again, that takes the time it takes. Ashmead is, is working with employees right now to get them to determine whether they want to support the union or not. That'll take the time it takes. The IFF is still the same, the FOP is still the same. Lines 281 to 289, good to have that step of the process, the voluntary recognition process, carried out by the FMCS. That is, that's a way to get a refund on your taxes. The FMCS is a federally supported labor relations group who does all sorts of card checks and mediations and different things. And they're cheap, honestly. You know, cost matters. And so using the FMCS to do that, they are neutral, they are affordable. They come in and what they do is if there are 150 firefighters, you gotta have 76 of them present cards and say, we want to be, we want to have this union represent us. You're going to employ a person who's going to sit there neutrally and say, that's a good card, that's a good card, that's a good card. Simple, fair, very standard. Page three is about, you know, when you're, what the union cares most about is when any given employee has an issue or when the union has an issue, being able to have a process for things to be heard. The more things that are subject to the process, the better off they are. So this expands what's subject to arbitration to issues that are raised by the union potentially and includes those topics that are covered by the employee handbook. And agreements process is a way for an employee or a union to say, oh, wait a second, you're not carrying out overtime the way we've agreed to. Or you're not paying the weekend premium the way you agreed to. And then you have usually a couple meetings about it. Somebody's going to win, somebody's going to lose or get it resolved. And that's that. It's, you know, usually just dispute resolution. And you negotiate that dispute resolution process. Lines 441, 447, similar to what I was just talking about. The kind of consensus view is if you're going to have things, this is about the interest arbitration process. Just pick one from FMCS. They are, again, very affordable, very adept at this. They can give the list of arbitrators rather than having a variety that can change from cycle to cycle. 471, 472, there was a language to have interest arbitration, which is the way to kind of resolve when bargaining kind of goes a little sideways. You have an interest arbitration and somebody comes in to say, you know, if the union's at a 3% wage increase and the union's at a 5% increase, which one is more fair? That was boxed into kind of four hours. You don't need to be four hours. These things take the time that they take. Tonight's meeting takes the time it takes. Things take the time they take. Honestly, the meter is always running on those things. And trust me, the union feels the pinch more than the city does on how long any arbitration takes. On the kind of the window for, for negotiating, typical thing is to try to make it fit with the budget cycle. And so this moves the window out from October 1 all the way to January 31st. That gives you plenty of time, particularly if you're going to have three unions, which seems like you're on course to do, to have those three different conversations. They're going to be going simultaneously. And you'll meet weekly or every couple of weeks or every three weeks with the different unions. And, you know, you start off, you kind of meet each other and then it's going to, you know, things happen. Conversations just take a while, the holidays, this, that, and the other. So that's kind of standard. In fact, most of the schemes that I work with go to usually March 1st. So trying to compromise there a bit. And then lines 161, 162, it's honestly just kind of an odd requirement that said that employee has to go to their manager before they go to anybody else. And that's, that's just a strange requirement. So it's tough. So with those amendments and those edits, you know, the unions will feel very satisfied about how this has come together. It'll be, be a nice day in Salisbury. What questions can I answer?
Anybody have any questions? I got one. You struck out under lines 232, 240, you suggested striking out promotional schedules and training.
Yes, because that would be among, that would be subsumed by the other conditions of employment. So yeah, promotional schedules, again, that's, that's kind of a great example of a thing that fire departments and police departments as rank structures care about. They want their, they want a good list of who's going to be the next lieutenant every two years. They care about that thing. General employees will care about having the opportunity to see a promotion. You know, maybe be the first to know about it. But they don't have the same, you know, interest in having a real system of how it works. But then, you know, there are lots of topics like that, the other terms and conditions of employment get covered by.
Any other questions from the council? Ashley, I'll turn it over to you. Your thoughts on these suggestions?
I guess I can speak on behalf of the administration and Andy can chime in or mayor if I'm mistaken. But I believe a lot of these, we would be comfortable making the changes. I think the big ticket items are still as follows. The other terms and conditions of employment, if we're excluding, you know, this is a compromise. Do we want to add any other exclusions to that? Or do we want to keep it as written with the specifically enumerated subjects in terms of, you know, I think, you know, we've had a lot of discussions. So we need to hear from, I need to hear from council on how that needs to be drafted. I think in terms of the duration of the CBA, I think we would like it to be not less than two, not more than three, because it is going to be a rather onerous process for administration with having three different units we're negotiating with. So for that work, we'd like to have it be lasted for at least two years as opposed to one. And then in terms of the matters subject to arbitration, I know that Meg, the director of HR, spent a lot of time redoing the employee handbook. And the plan that we had thought was to keep that separate and out of the CBA. So at this point, administration is not interested in grieving anything that would be involved in the employee handbook. And the, in terms of the arbitration itself, some of those factors, limiting the time to try a case that was just to keep down cost. And then I think the other big point that administration was concerned with is the timelines for negotiating. I, I think there's a concern that going through January 31st is still a little late in terms of if we end up in arbitration, because that's when you start having budget meetings in January. So I think we would be comfortable going through December 31st. But those are, I think, the two big ticket items are for you all to decide in terms of what's going to be subject to bargaining and what will be subject to arbitration. And I missed overlooked, in terms of the arbitration selection, I know that the, David is interested in the one particular federal mediation conciliation services. And I think we'd like to keep it open to other agencies like the AAA or JAMS.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I have one question. I'd like to get some information in terms of the arbitration comments. I wonder if the attorney could gather for us, what are the average hours of arbitration for the department you mentioned?
The average, the average hours of arbitration?
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's, let's kind of take the bull by the horns here, Mr. Mayor. I've been practicing for 13 years. I myself have never taken a case to interest arbitration to actual hearing. It's a rarity. It's a, it's a tool that keeps the parties on track, but it's actually a tool that's rarely used. It's more the idea that you have to go to a third party that keeps the parties on track. So the idea is, particularly in Maryland and in most of the labor codes we have here, is you do baseball arbitration, which means an arbitrator has to choose either the last position of the city or the last position of the union. So the common example is that you negotiate for two or three months and the timeline's getting kind of towards the end and you gotta focus your issues. You, you agree on a whole bunch of things, agree on 10 things, but there are three sticking points. Wages is almost always one of them, right? And so, you know, you get down to a point where the, the city says we can only afford a 3% raise and the union says our members are suffering if they don't get a 5% raise and you stick there. Each side needs to be able to stand by that final number, because that's the number. The arbitrator doesn't select anything in the middle. They select either the 3% or the 5%. That system actually makes the, the parties be very, very rational. Because if you're the outlier, you lose. If you're the, the union that says, we gotta get 20% across the board, you're going to lose instantaneously. You don't even go to hearing back then. And so it keeps the pairs, it keeps everybody pushing towards the middle, pushing towards the middle, pushing towards the middle. So given that, that reality, given the fact that honestly, most unions and most municipalities don't like to win or lose. Arbitration, collective bargaining is at its best when everybody is solving problems together. They, they say, the, the union asks for whatever problem they see. The city says, eh, we can do some of that. Well, that's good. You resolve some of them. That's, that is as good as it gets. And if you're having to go to a third party and say, one of you is going to be a winner and one of you is going to be a loser, that's a bad day. Because everybody in, in this room has to see each other. They all resent it. If the firefighters go to arbitration, they lose. It's, it casts a long shadow that makes them frustrated with whatever got them to arbitration. If the city loses, they get frustrated with how they got there and how they miscalculated. So there is no, if you do it in a, in a place like this, look, arbitration is only as costly as the jurisdiction. I mean, if you have just a couple of issues and a narrow gap, it's a day's hearing. If you get there. Again, I haven't gotten there.
So what is the average, what are you saying?
I'm saying I can't speak to a councilwoman because I, I have not experienced it. I can tell you that in a jurisdiction like Antirundel where I've second chaired arbitration, it'll go five days, maybe. But in Antirundel, that's the only place that I've, I've seen, I've second chaired it again in the last 13 years. So what, what happens most of the time is you get up to that deadline and the party say, we really don't want to get arbitration. How do we bridge this gap? How do we close it? So there's no way to, to estimate the cost. And also honestly, it's the cost of your attorneys, if you have an in-house attorney. That's the price of that in-house attorney. If you have arbitrators are expensive sometimes and affordable others. I mean, they honestly, they never seem quite affordable, but they, their rates vary wildly. So I'm sorry, that's not a dodge, Mr. Mayor. It's just kind of, the perspective is that interest arbitration, there's no way to average it. I don't know if you could even kind of pool it over the years in, in the state of Maryland.
That's not comforting, but that's okay. Thank you.
It ought to be comforting that it's a rarity, that it is the system that works far more often than it fails. And, and, you know, the, the idea behind it is, is that your, your, your public, your employees are not ever going to strike, right? In the private sector, the way employees say, we can't, we can't take it anymore is they walk out the door. Your employees are never going to do that. They're always going to show up and patch the puddles and put out the fires and do whatever. And when they get frustrated that they're not being listened to, this is the way that they have to get a result. And they're a winner, they're a loser. But, you know, again, most of the time, nobody wants to win, nobody wants to lose. It's, it's, it's a good tool to motivate the parties, but it is not, not, not.
So let's, I'm going to go down the line. Does anybody have any more questions for Ashley?
I, I would like to just add my experience, because my firm, we do a lot of employment law. And we represent a number of unions ourselves. And we have been to arbitration in terms of employee grievances a number of times. And we've also, and with another local municipality, we've done two arbitrations. One, we settled on the cusp of having a hearing. The other one, we had a hearing. And that involved the parts of the CBA. So I, you know, I do think it's an effective tool to try to reach an agreement. But I myself have been involved in a number of arbitrations.
Ashley, I have one, sorry, one question. How long was that? Like how many days?
For the arbitration, they were, they were normally one day.
Sure, for grievance arbitration, I should say. So there's, there's two kinds of arbitration. There's grievance arbitration, which is the contract says that if you work on Saturdays, you get double pay. And if you don't get paid double pay, you file a grievance and say, why aren't you paying double pay? And that can go to arbitration. Maybe the city says, because you're not in the group, you get double pay. Well, then you go to an arbitration and duke that out. Interest arbitration is the arbitration where the two sides are negotiating, they're talking about the groups as a whole. And then you get to, well, we can't, we can't agree on a collective bargaining agreement. And that's kind of a different beast. And that's where you get the, the baseball sort of situation.
So what I was thinking now.
Working our way?
What's that?
Working our way down the line?
Yeah. I just want to make sure, and we hit through them pretty hard. This one kind of has a different bullet point. I wanted to make sure everybody was tracking what administration was comfortable with making changes on, such as a vote or a discussion or that.
I kind of made notes of your proposition, which, which I had was the duration was one of them. Of course, I understand the other terms and conditions is one. The, you had concerns about the arbitrator and then the average hours of arbitration. Those were the.
In matter, in matters subject to arbitration.
That was the terms and conditions?
No, it's a, it's third stop one.
Which one, which lines?
Which line is it?
Line 4287.
Gotcha.
I forgot who this was. And the timeline too, I think you were hoping to.
Yeah, moved to December 31st and so January 31st. And again, that comes down to negotiation on our, when we are doing budget. So that is something that we're either gonna, we extend it, we're gonna feel it on the other end. So it's.
Gotcha. When's the, not it, I'll tell you, December 31st is a terrible deadline because it'll ruin some holidays. Because a lot of work gets done at the last moment. You're feeling pressure, you wanna get it wrapped up. The parts are, the, the parties are a little closed. If you're doing that on Christmas Eve.
That's an added incentive to both sides to get it done before Christmas.
Yes.
Well, then I would say maybe December 20th or maybe January, February 1st. But December 31st is really, this day just suffered through this jackalot of a sentence.
Yeah. I'm just wondering how many days we're losing in there with holidays between Thanksgiving and Christmas and.
Getting back January makes all the difference, honestly. It's a long, quiet month, right?
Right.
Where you can do this work. Yeah, yeah. People, people come out of a feeling of pressure.
Yes.
Yeah, it's true.
And you're not struck.
Yeah.
All right, so.
David, do you have any objection to moving it up earlier? Starting before October 1?
For three units? When is your budget actually submitted? I mean, usually we turn around, again, we, when you're in negotiations, you're usually talking a lot with the budget folks, saying, what is your reality about when you gotta get your budget finalized and taken to the council?
What's not even about finalization? It's understanding the impacts that this document, this CBA, will have on revenues that we need to collect to be able to offset increased expenditures. What else is we're going to cut or not be willing to fund in the CIP because we have to have other considerations? We don't want to be rushed on that timeline either. And that usually happens, and then we meet with all of our department heads in the February, March timeframe. So not knowing a significant portion of that conversation that could still be ongoing in February because we go into another thing would just potentially be very messy on the back end. So then we would have to have an accelerated budget conversation with council.
Yeah, I guess my thought about that is that, that assumes that like the negotiations kind of come, go out of control on you somehow, like.
I'm going to assume the worst and hope for the best. So that's where I have to position the city.
I get it, I get it, but, you know, you as a, as a person who keeps track of the numbers will give authority to whoever in October saying, here's the reality of what we can afford. And the union's gonna push on that, but it's only gonna go so far. And if the, if the city says, you know, personnel increase, personnel costs can't go up over 5%, your table team's gonna try and make that work, right? And then it'd be a strange scenario where an art, it'd be, I can't imagine a scenario where arbitrator comes in and says, oh, it's gonna be twice that increase or anything like that. That's, that's a, if the, if the city was, was very, very stubborn and very, very stingy, you could possibly have a scenario like that. But you, you plan for it and it's unusual.
Is there any reason why we couldn't start it right after Labor Day? I think that's what Andy's saying. Maybe moving it up earlier and then that way we could end before the holiday and we would know, yeah.
Again, this, this is, I don't mind starting earlier, but it's, it's gonna be awkward this year. I mean, if you get these groups going, the first contracts take a while. I mean, this is when kind of the, everybody's getting familiar with each other and everybody trying to figure it out. And again, I think most jurisdictions, they can work with a February 1 or March 1. Yeah, I mean, honestly, it's also worked out, even finished with Meg, they make it work.
Again, I, I would say, I appreciate the comments. You all have to adopt the budget. You have to fill the presentations. You have to go through the process. You have to decide where, where you want there to be pressure. Pressure during the negotiation period potentially, or pressure figuring out how to, once we've come to an agreement, how that impacts potentially other decision points you have to make. So it's really just where you wanna, because if we can slide this way, we can slide this way. It doesn't necessarily matter at the end of the day. Once we have a decision point, we'll use that formula into it. But when we have department heads meeting with us during budget, they will be advocating potentially for something that may not have resolution yet. So that's just something that we have to take into consideration while we're building our budget to then submit to you by April 15th, so.
And the flip side, the flip side of that too is that, I noticed from the state in particular, revenues and, and your accounting for the prior year is coming in not until usually January, February, right? You're probably basing your budget on numbers that are coming in and, you know, money from the state that comes in or whatever else. So all that is to say, you probably have a better sense of the next fiscal year. Honestly, not until, probably comes into focus in February and March, really. I, I don't know your particular rhythms, but that would be kind of typical where the, you know, looking at the, the past year's experience and thinking about the next year's experience. And crunch period is really February and March usually. So, which helps, honestly, when, when, when that's being discussed on the table, that's helpful to have those like up-to-the-minute numbers that roll into February and March. But anyway, I'll take the anywhere. Try, try to compromise here. December seems very rushed is my honest assessment. Very rushed.
I, I do not have a, a strong opinion either way on, on that. Again, I've made my piece on where we will feel it as an organization. The further creates further things. But I, just January 31st, or December 31st, I understand that, how they understand that, that process, December 15th.
What about January 15th? Is that kind of like in the middle? And then if there's any type of arbitration, hopefully that could be wrapped up by January 31st. But we do, just saying, I don't know how long that takes, but.
It'll probably be, it'll be, it'll be a while. If something's not wrapped up by the end of January, we're probably discussing this with, through March. So we will be in, you know, less than a month trying to submit a budget to you all for review with a pretty big, I'm not saying it's a big hole. I mean, it may be very close, but it could be this way or this way. Which, with our budgets, it could be half a million dollars to a million dollars easily, which changes the game sometimes.
Yeah, see, our budget has to be submitted by April 15th. That's, that's in our charter and code.
Let me, let me suggest this. How about, as you just said, because President, January 15th and then the parties can mutually extend. It just depends on what the budget, what you all say, if you can extend it in any given cycle. Because sometimes you get to January 15th and you say, oh, we're, we're not even discussing a budgetary issue. We're stuck on, you know, how the promotions in the fire department work. And that's just gonna take another couple of weeks and, you know, whatever, you extend because you can agree to extend. That's a.
Does, does that work?
Yeah.
We have consensus on January 15th?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
And then you have to, we need to spell out that extension piece.
Yeah, again, the parties can agree to mutually extend in writing something about that.
Right, so the next item, let's go ahead and tackle the big one, which is the other terms and conditions. So council, do you have any questions on that, concerns, suggestions? I don't know if anybody wants to start? Anybody a hard no on that?
No, what, say it again.
The term and conditions.
The other terms and conditions.
But you said something after that.
If we're hard no on it.
I'm not a hard no on that.
May I, can I, may I?
Sure.
I mean, because we just said where we stand. The one that is very near and dear to a lot of people, which I understand, that still continues to give me heartburn and HR heartburn is retirement. And where we land on retirement because of the way our retirement is set up and what we can and can't, maybe should not negotiate. So that's not an exclusionary piece on here that I think allowing that to be negotiated though may, may appear good, it could become very cumbersome and problematic at some point. So that's, I, I don't know, I don't have the experience, but that can be a, a difficult one dealing with estate retirement and stuff like that. So I would, I would caution to, I would ca, I, I know that's something that people really want to be able to protect the insurance, the, the retirement benefits that they currently have. I understand the desire for that and I think it's a great desire. So I don't know how to, that's just something that still causes pause for administration and HR is keeping retirement benefits. And I don't think they're compelling enough arguments.
Is it the city's position to continue with the existing retirement plans?
I don't, there's nothing on the horizon to not do that. And that's, that, I think it's probably the difficulty is.
Is that adding, is that adding that as an exclusionary piece that it's not something to?
Well, if we, if we add it as an exclusionary piece, there's no guarantee that me or the following person doesn't stick to what I'm saying right now.
Got you.
At the same time, the, the opposing argument is if we don't protect the ops, for example, then what is to say the next person after me doesn't strip it away? So if we guarantee it.
How do we protect?
That's right, how do you guarantee? So the question becomes, if you protect it and add it in there, what else, what other additional benefits are there now, are retirement packages do they now want on top of that? Because you can, you, that's the starting point of what they have now is guaranteed. Then it's where do you go from there? What is the next thing that you would want to now add that now could be added on top of that? It just becomes more costly, that's all.
Well, I mean, it's that thing that always hangs on our, on our.
Yeah, so that's, that is the, again, it is, it is crystal ball. I think everybody has the interest in, in protecting what we have existing right now. The question is, what is the unknown in the future that can be, that, that's with any of the other working terms and conditions or health insurance or any of these things. It's the unknown that always creates pause.
Retirement is an investment, is it?
And as we mentioned before, retirement specifically, it is something that if you already are vested, you have it. We can't take it away from you. It is, it is the person that is, if it's a 10-year retirement, that's in nine years that we then change our policy, they're on the outside looking in. And I understand how that can be very unfortunate and why someone would want to advocate to protect what they have right now. I mean, it makes, makes sense. Again, I just, one of our roles is to make sure that you all understand financially the difficulty of where we may be a year from now.
Thanks, Andy.
So retirement system all set by code and spelled out in the city's code?
I don't think it is. Is that something you could correct?
The thing about having retirement in as a topic is all any union can do is ask for something. And honestly, it's the city and the actuaries who always cost it. So a typical ask might be for a fire department, say, to improve the military service credit. You know, oh, you were in the, the day for 10 years. We'll let you have three years worth of retirement credit as a, as a way to incentivize your company. The union proposes that at the bargaining table. City sends that over to the actuaries, which always gets done. And they say, good lord, this is gonna cost $5 million. It's a nonstarter. You just say no, you know? The union's not gonna prevail in a benefit that's gonna bankrupt. The, they're not, the city's not gonna say yes to it, right? The actuaries aren't gonna support it and the union's unlikely to ask for it. And ultimately, an arbitrator, talking about a third rail they never touched, they're not gonna say, oh, well, let me give this very generous pension benefit that could balloon from. We all, we all know that. It's, it's a good thing to talk about because sometimes you want to extend. Maybe if that's the hot topic and it's a reasonable price tag, that's the thing the union wants to bet on. They want to go for, you know, the pension is behind in whatever way. You really can't recruit fire, fire personnel because they can't transfer from another jurisdiction. If that's the hot topic, then maybe that's the hot topic and you have a good conversation about it. If it's too pricey, it's too pricey. I mean, that's, trust me, I face that reality all the time. Those dollars add up real quick. So I would urge you to leave it in, see where it goes. Again, the city gets to say no. The actuaries get to say, too costly. You know, the arbitrator could overrule you, but it's a narrow path to get there.
Counsel, so anybody have any concerns or questions on this particular item?
No concerns, just to me, Andy referenced it a bit. To me, it's my priority. I like using the word protection because we are not guaranteed that same members of council will exist next year. We don't know who's gonna be walking in. We don't know where Andy's gonna be in, you know, two, five, eight, 10 years. And I like that extra layer of protection for our workers because they deserve it. So just to, for where I stand on, you know, lines 230, 220, 240, that's where I am.
Anybody else? Is everybody supportive of, of this?
Yes.
Of, of.
Of adding in other terms and conditions?
Yes, yes. I am.
And will that, I, I want to back up a minute. What about the retirement? I, that's, that.
It leaves it as a point that they can negotiate.
And that's how, is that's left?
Correct.
Yeah.
I miss your family, they, I really do miss you very much. I mean, that's, I, I, I feel as though that's why we really can't keep working. We're like here, there and everyone, they're leaving. And we need something to keep the people here. We need some kind of format for these people to know that we do have their back. And as long as we keep acting like we don't care, then people will keep leaving. We have good workers. We have lost a lot of good workers. I know a lot of them that I have seen in other jobs. I'm like, what are you doing here? Didn't you used to work for the city? And when they tell me the story, I'm like, we shouldn't be losing these people. People have been there for years. I stayed on Lake Street, I've seen the city workers. I know a lot of them that have been there for years. And they're gone somewhere else because the city hasn't been fair. Not just saying our administration, but administrations before. We need to make these people feel comfortable. We need to make these people know that we have their backs. One way or the other, we have them. Whether they come up for arbitration or not, we should let them know that they do have a voice. And that's true. And that's, I, I, I have nothing else to say. If you want good workers, you've got to give them something.
Um, Mr. President, what's your comfort, what's your comfort level with that dialogue?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I, I wanna, the only concern I have, and I don't know if there's something outside of this that we can do to potentially protect retirement for employees. Because like you said, we don't know who's gonna be here next year, five years down the road. That's just my opinion.
Other than, I mean, other than changing rules internally and all this pinky promising, there's nothing that I think we can do that, that guarantees anything beyond the current mayor and administration and the council. Because it, you know, has to be adopted through budget or through policy ordinance. So it becomes, this makes it that it becomes.
It's the best we can do.
Yeah.
What's your comfort level? One, be all other terms of employment?
I'm supportive of it.
What was that next?
So that's, so on that one, there's, are you supportive?
Yes.
Okay, so that's five council members that support adding it. Next, I had on the list, and I don't know if I wrote them down in order because I was just scribbling.
That is chicken scratch.
Look, I, I get it, I get it, I get it.
That's, that's the whole mood.
We had.
I think you're looking at, uh, duration.
Duration, yeah.
Duration, yeah.
And we're trying to figure out which order I, and I kind of.
Yes. I would know anything about that.
The proposal was one year, no longer than two. Uh, we had no indefinite like ceiling. So it was brought up at maybe two to three is what's standard. So we've now put a ceiling. We're, we're okay with making it two to three rather than one to two. Again, with three people, a lot to accomplish. I think one is very aggressive, I think.
I was wondering.
Two to three.
They said a one to.
I understand we only have it at two. Next thing you know, it's five, you're blank.
Yeah.
So we would be comfortable adjusting that to no fewer than two years and no more than three.
Okay.
That's our, that would be our, our on the fly modification, so.
Okay. I mean, that's kind of where I, I felt, because you don't need to be doing it number one every year. That's just, um, but I think my wife works for Acton. I think they just did one and it's, is it five years? I can't remember. But two to three years. Is everybody supportive of two to three years consensus on that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Definitely.
All good.
Next, um, was the.
Twitty ones. Matters subject to arbitration.
Matters, okay.
Sorry, which lines for those? I'm going by section. Sorry, which lines for those, I'm going by section.
Four twenty-eight.
Four twenty-eight, okay, okay, I was just trying, jumping around.
I think, of, of all the things on the table, this one gives me the most heartburn. We spent a lot of time creating an employee handbook, we were very comfortable with what we've put in there, um, to then have this ripped out from our control or something, I think is, if it's not in the CBA, we should keep it out of the CBA, and we handle it differently. So, especially if we decided to work in other terms and conditions into it. So I would, we are proposing to keep it as, as is, maybe the only thing is the employer exclusive representative. Yeah, the exclusive representative, if it's underlined and added, we're okay with that. But we would not be arguing to add or employ handbook into that, we would strike that from within.
Yeah, that employee handbook.
I, I, I do agree with you on that, Andy.
That's cool, I would, I would agree with you.
So that one, we're not, is everybody comfortable with not adding that?
Yeah.
Next was the, uh, arbitrator selection, four forty-one, four forty-seven.
Um, to us, it seems reasonable to have options and availability, um, if it comes down to price points or different things we wanna do for whatever reason, I, I would not limit ourselves in this scope. So that, striking those to me seems odd. I mean, maybe there's comfort in using a singular one, but having options, I would.
Can I suggest compromise? I think that's my role here. This, the, the typical thing that I see is e- either American Arbitration or FMCS, or one of the other, JAMs is unusual. I mean, if we wanna have the option to go AAA or FMCS, fine, ho- honestly, it's the same groups of folks mostly. It kind of depends on when a code was written, which one they go with, sometimes they give the option, um, there's no, no strong preference there. And I guess my concern about having options is that somebody has to make the call on which one we're going with. And so, I don't wanna fight over that kind of thing. All of these, by the way, are just, you know, what you do is you have a list of, you know, AAA and FMCS, they, they train up, they vet, individuals, mostly lawyers, but not always, who are familiar with labor disputes, and they just have hails of them, and they say, those people have done the training, those people have the experience, those people, you know, know how to communicate with the parties, and they literally have a computer system that says, give me five names, and they give you five names in Maryland, or, you know, if it's nine names, they just kind of spit it out, make sure the parties, um, get their dispute heard, and kind of just have some, both of them also have kind of some general rules about how it all fits together, that fills into gaps, it's not wildly different.
I, so if we, uh, all right, so, um, because we're adding more things that are potentially open for arbitration, we'd love to have, um, the widest selection process on deciding who is going to be a potential arbiter for the city.
So would that mean, including all three?
And that is us. Keep it as, as, for us, that's, again, that's, it's, it's.
Everybody okay with including all three?
Okay.
Can I ask how the selection gets made? If the union says, we really like FMCS, they're the cheapest, and they have the most affordable people, and the city says, eh, we really think this is best suited to JAMs, is, how do we break that little logjam, I guess, is the question? Do we mutually agree, do we alternate, do we, I don't know, something? I mean, it seems like a silly fight to have, but it's a fight that we're gonna have, I would just assume anticipated, cure it now.
I mean, if you got something.
I would assume we would want to go with the least expensive one, to the difficult, since we're all talking about how much money.
Where. Or. Or alternates, I don't, I don't know.
Hey, this is Seville, I'm sorry to also weigh in, um, uh, agreed on what David's saying, I've recently been working with FMCS and the AAA. I do think that they tend to be just cheaper, more reasonable options. Of the two, FMCS is markedly, um, more reasonable cost, and we do use those in our contracts far more than AAA. Um, I just wanted to throw it out there for a cost-saving measure, um, it is, both of them do very good jobs. I am less familiar, uh, with JAMs and haven't heard great things about them, but I will say I've worked with both AAA and FMCS, and, um, really, you know, super solid. So even if you're limiting, I would maybe actually limit one more time, and then if you're limiting based on cost, I would limit to FMCS.
So would you have to pay either one of those?
The cost, yes, would be split.
Through, through one of those, the AAA or FMCS, you would, whichever one you chose, that's who you would?
From that, that's where you would get the panel of arbitrators from, and then from there, you would do the selection. I think David's concern is, are we going to fight whether we are going to use JAMs versus, um, American Arbitration Association?
Candidly, JAMs tends to be lots of retired judges who are, uh, filling up their coffers, and they charge pretty good money to, to do that work. Um, so the labor arbitrators tend to be a little, little more affordable, a little more familiar with things, with these types of issues.
So do we wanna go with AAA and FMCS? Is that, those are the two options?
Yeah, I think that's.
I would.
And then maybe?
We like all three.
Like?
We like all three. I don't wanna go into detail on that, but we like all three.
And you want, and then just flip a coin?
No, I'd say, you know, when we have to go into arbitration, if you play this out, are we playing it out based off of positioning who and where we wanna land? If administration is deciding that they want to make sure that we are working with an arbitration firm that we feel most comfortable with from an investment standpoint and to favorably, we're gonna pick the one that we think at that moment, at that time, depending on the topic, will help us get to that. They will pick who they will argue for that is most favorable to them for whatever reason, so I like options. If I'm having to be the one who has to argue for it, and as someone who has been very conservative financially, I am not picking the most expensive person just to pick the most expensive person. So that's, that's what I'm arguing for. Again, if we're expanding the scope of what is now potentially open for arbitration, limiting our ability to then navigate that, um, I, I, I keep too cautious.
Here, here's a way to have options, it's, um, the, the five-member panel is kind of a small panel, that's, it's usually seven or nine. So what happens is you, you call up FMCS, and you say, I need nine names to settle this dispute and assault there. We give you the nine names, then you, you prioritize, you go back and forth, and you wind up somebody, that gives you more options right off the bat on how many, how many potential hearers of this there are. You only wind up with one, the way it works is you usually flip a coin and say, um, there are nine names, I'm gonna get rid of one name, the city's gonna get rid of one name, I'm gonna get rid of another name, and then there's one man left standing, or a woman, that's the way it works. You want more options, you can expand the number of names on the list, and then you got more options, it's a nice way to go. Um, nine or eleven is really kind of typical, so seven or nine here, if we're kind of keeping it a little tidier and a little shorter, certainly fine by me to do FMCS, AAA, panel of nine, so that's pretty standard language, honestly. Gives you options.
I am not the lawyer in the room, but for talking to David, who says we never go to arbitration, it seems like a point to be really hammering home if we're never gonna get here, so I would argue.
I hope it is.
There's probably some other, why, why are you so hard on this point if it's not that big of a deal? Because we never get there, so.
Leave like it is.
Yeah.
What's that?
Just leave like it is.
Options, I, I, I think we want the options section, I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, leave like it is.
So you wanna go all three on the list?
Yeah, leave like it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
Go from there.
I think that's fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll, we'll figure out at any given moment, if it comes through an alley, which, which we choose.
Sure.
So be it.
Uh, is there, is there any other items, is that it?
I think, uh, the time limits, or do we want to try to limit it, um, in order to keep our costs down, and try to, if we're gonna do the arbitration, limit it to a day, as opposed to five days, yeah.
A day, exactly.
Which would mean each side would get four hours.
I mean, I'm, I'm not familiar with this, but a day feels really short, but I'm, I don't know the ins and outs of, of everything, that's my two cents, I don't.
Yeah, that's my only concern, that's.
But she's done arbitrations before, so she, six to an hour, a day, it's eight hours.
No, that's true, that's true, I just, um, I've also been doing research, and I, it's my understanding that in other areas, it's more than just one day. So that's another, like, thought process that I've been going through, is looking at some of the areas that have had success in going through this process, and they typically do more than one day, but if you think that as a cost-saving measure, that's the reasons why.
I do, I mean, I've tried tr- um, bench trials, and, you know, you're locally, and sometimes with a judge, you gotta get down the docket, it makes your case presentation very efficient if you know you have to get in and get out.
But at the same time, actually, those aren't technically limited, right? I mean, I, I, let me tell the council, I, I've never seen a limit on the duration of an arbitration, it, it, it takes the time it takes.
No, that was limited, yeah.
The, the meter is running for any given union, they maybe have an attorney, you know, often have an attorney, um, the meter's running on the arbitrator.
Well. We, we do have.
The, the unions feel the pressure of that cost, that, trust me, they, they do not wanna bank, um, they know it's been, which it dues unnecessarily on, on a losing case that's, that's dragging on too long.
There is saving language, unless otherwise agreed, so I mean, obviously, the city wouldn't want to shortchange itself either if we believed it was going to take longer than a day, I think that, you know, rational minds would prevail.
Could we do two days? Two, at least two.
Find a middle line there.
Yeah, that's the middle line, you know, I mean, it could go over then.
Two days, but then if they, if they think it's gonna take longer, but also remember, we've got three unions.
Right.
That each individual one, so, not saying that would happen, but you could have all three go to arbitration at the same time, and it would be three different. I mean, that's the, that's the worst, it's Andy's worst-case scenario.
What do you want, a week?
No, but no, for each one, this is like, if this was, if this was Ask Me, it would, we're talking just about that, that particular one.
Each one would get two days.
Yeah, two, yeah.
Yeah. Right.
We just, we don't want it to go no more than, I guess, two days.
Two days, two days.
Opinion of the council, okay.
So the way that it would change is up to?
Eight hours, eight hours.
Two hours and then two days, as written?
Yeah.
Unless, but keeping the same, otherwise, unless.
I'll ask a great. Yeah.
So it was, so that was the last item, that was, so a- as we've discussed today, the changes, do, with everything we've discussed with the labor code today, do we have consensus from the council to have them move this forward?
Yes.
After they've, add everything?
With the, with the changes.
With the changes.
Um, how long do you think you're gonna need?
Um, do, are you trying to get it on council for next week or the following week?
Ultimately, there's always, is to have this done by August thirty resolution.
Maybe at Orne's.
It's, it's an ordinance, so.
People do need it.
Tomorrow, Friday, Tuesday. I, Friday morning.
Um.
Can't put it out after that.
No, yeah, I mean, if we, we try to.
I couldn't even go that far.
Can, can I make this decision easy, I go to surgery on Friday, so I may not be able to come in on Monday. That's, to be able to vote on it, so.
So you would rather be the following?
If we could do it the following.
First reading.
Yeah, the first.
Okay, that's, that's, make it easy for her.
That, that's why I say, let me make it easy for everybody, I would like to be here for this, so, yeah, if I could, if we could make it.
Yeah, it would be the first, the first reading would be the, the last legislative session.
And I have no comment on how long the surgery's gonna be.
And then the second reading will be the first legislative session in August, so.
Yes.
And then.
Five, five Mondays in August.
Yeah, okay.
So, okay.
Yeah. And would this be a first reading, again?
First and a second, it is, uh, we would change, yeah.
Okay, good to know. Just wanted to give a timeline in my head, go, okay. Sorry, guys, to be, to be the holdup this time.
So, uh, that was the only item on the agenda today, so thank you, everyone, uh, for the discussion, and, uh, appreciate everyone who came out and attended, so, um, this is just the work.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so we, we want the administration comments?
Don't know, we got comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, um, I'd like to extend my deepest sympathy to the victims and the families
Yes.
of the senseless shooting that took place just last night, out, just outside the city limits. Um, we just spend a tremendous amount of time talking about issues which pale in comparison to the problem we have in our country. And I ask that we all pray for the families and the victims, um, and for the soul of the one fourteen-year-old that was killed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jackson, any comments?
Um, I concur with, um, the mayor, I knew that young man who was murdered. Um, I know several other of the young kids, and I've been on live all day, and I don't mean to get on live, but if we don't recognize that we have a problem here, and if we don't recognize that we need things for the children, the young people to do, then we have an issue. There's nothing for these kids to do, and I'm not using it as an excuse for what they're doing, no, I'm not. But we need to come together, a county and a city, and do the, we've got community buildings, centers, that are not really being used, and you have to pay to get in them, I've never seen anything in my life like it, but these kids need something to do and somewhere to go. I try to implement a lot of activity for our community, free events, but we need more, we need more. We need much more than this for our kids. My heart is hurt, I was so upset this morning, I got, actually got sick when I got the phone call. Something needs to be done, I'm not gonna preach no sermon, I'm just gonna say, if we, these are our kids, I don't care whether we're black, green, gold, or purple, these are our children. Fourteen-year-old dying? Unnecessary, unnecessary, and, and I'll say this again, after nine o'clock, parents need to know where their children are, especially when they're that age. They need to know where their kids are. And I'm not blaming the parent for it, because I don't know how this took place or whatever, and we need to send our kids to places that are chaffroned by people who care, and not just send our kids out to a party 'cause our kid said he wanna go to a party. If you're gonna send your kids out, make sure your kids are where they're supposed to be, that's all I have to say. And I'm praying for the families and for Danielle Maddox, whose son was murdered, Xavier.
Not, not much to say other than cosign, uh, what everybody else has said about it, it is, it's just tragic, it's pointless, senseless. I, I just, I, I can't even imagine what the parents are going through, um, and, you know, here we are, you know. We had a community that could have been celebrating last night, but instead, we woke up this morning to the news, and that's just not the kind of community that I think any of us want. None of us want that, so.
Um, same sentiments in regards to that. Um, I have a couple of points of interest, I, uh, somehow on, uh, a work session, I would like the discussion to have some type of independent engineer here to study our parking before the shovel hits the gravel, to look at, um, to look at that issue that continues to be unfolding. Uh, the other thing is, I did ask about the scooters, uh, I wanted to know how much they have brought into the city thus far since their implementation, and have a discussion about their safety, the safety of the scooters. And, um, of course, and as always, if you are healthy enough, um, please donate blood, you never know when you'll need it or someone in your family will need it, and one pint of blood can help up to three people, so please donate blood.
Um, Jack and April ordered it perfectly, um, now more than ever, it's definitely a time to hold your loved ones close, um, and I know that following this, we're really gonna rally together as a community, a lot needs to be done, and it's gonna get done. I have full faith in this council, working with the, the county, with our sheriff's office and law enforcement officers, um, to really make sure that our kids are staying safe out there. Um, the one silver lining coming out of today is that we were able to say that we represent the employees of the city. I feel immensely proud that, you know, we were able to finally bring this, this was a conversation you guys were having long before I was ever appointed to this. So I'm just grateful that I was able to be a part of the solution, um, and making sure that our employees are being fully represented.
I just wanna concur with everybody's sentiment.
I concur with everybody's sentiments. I don't have much to add, except just thank everybody for showing up today, all employees, Jack, thank you all for your work. And, uh, with that, we're adjourned.